And I believe it, do we have somebody here to lead us in invocation? Shannon, do you know?
Yes, the doctor, I'm going to allow him to join.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mark.
Hi Pastor Flores, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Great.
Thank you for the opportunity. Yeah, let us pray. The Lord is our shepherd, we shall not want. You make it lie down on green pastures, you be used by the still waters. You restoreth our soul. You live and pass the righteousness for your namesake, though we walk through the valley of shadow death, we'll fear no evil for that are with us. Your rod and your staff are with us. Lord, I thank you today, Lord, for our counsel, thank you for our mayor. I thank you, Lord, for this transition, this progress. Lord, that you've allowed us as a city, as a team to experience. We pray for your grace and your mercy. We pray for our leaders. We thank you, Lord, for their heart and soul, Lord, their desire to want to serve. We pray, Lord, that you help us to effectively serve your people, Lord, your public. We pray over Baldwin Park, Lord. Lord, especially those who are going through situations today. Those who have been just victims of COVID-19. Those who are mourning the passing of loved ones. Those who are fighting the disease. But we just pray, God, today, you bring health and healing to their lives. Lord, thank you, lead us and guide us, give us your wisdom tonight. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Flores. Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to lead us in the flag salute?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Ready, begin. And to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you Mayor Pro Tem. City Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, thank you Mayor. Councilmember Daniel Damien.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem, Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Mayor Emmanuel Estada.
Here, thank you. And at this point, I believe we move on to proclamations, commendations, and presentations, and I believe we have a presentation by Erica Fausto, Scott, and Scott Sapers, correct?
Yes, Mayor. Mark, is that ready to go?
Yes, we're ready to go.
Awesome, okay, good to go, okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Staff. Thank you for having us tonight. Excited to present. And hopefully officially kick off the Prepare L.A. Baldwin Park. A project, an initiative that we definitely have been wanting to kick off and because of the pandemic, we put it on hold, but I think now's a great time to get this kicked off. And of course, it would be virtually for now until we can meet back in person, so. Again, my name is Erica Fausto Aguado, and I am the Executive Director for the American Red Cross serving the Greater San Gabriel Pomona Valley Chapter. So, next slide, please. Okay, our mission, the American Red Cross prevents and alleviates human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. And those are small-scale, large-scale disasters. Next slide, please. Red Cross lines of services, so a lot of folks, they look at the Red Cross and they think blood. That's the first thought that always pops up, but you know, there are a number of things that the Red Cross, the services that we provide, of course, our disaster services. Whenever there's a local home fire, or as we saw last summer with the wildfires, or if there is an event in a city where individuals are in need of evacuation, are in need of shelter, snacks, or water even, that is when the Red Cross comes in. And of course, blood services, blood services has been, you know, really, really significant, especially in this past year. The blood, the need for blood has become so dire. And the need for convalescent plasma, we are actively asking for individuals who have recovered from COVID to donate right now, and hopefully, you know, that has shown to make an impact to individuals who get sick from COVID. Training services, we offer CPR. We offer preparedness courses, swimming, swimming lessons. That is all part of training services. Of course, international services, a lot of folks are also unaware of what we do with reunification of families. That is a service that the Red Cross offers as well, and service to armed forces. We are a resource for veterans, for our veteran community. Next slide, please. So I just want to give right now a brief introduction of Prepare L.A. and what this initiative is all about. And please feel free to interrupt me if anybody has questions, if not, we can save it till the end. Next slide, please. So this is an initiative to target communities in the Los Angeles area who are most vulnerable to disasters. And again, disasters come in a number of different ways. We saw recently, this past weekend, in the city of Glendora, for example, there was a threat, there was a home that had dynamite in it, and of individuals had to be evacuated. The week before that, there was a similar incident in the city of Almani. So the Red Cross is there, we come in to provide resources, and we're a partner, we're a partner with police departments, we're a partner with the Ali County Fire Department. So that's really where we play a role. Next slide, please. So the strategy, there is a strategy towards this Prepare L.A. initiative. So it's to identify partners, partners in the city. So government, labor, community, private, of course, you know, working with the city, working with the school district. Looking for those partners to participate in this initiative, and prior to the pandemic starting, the six months prior, I was meeting with the Business Association, the Women's Club, the School District, the Boys and Girls Club, a number of stakeholders in the city to discuss this project. Again, community engagement, so this is really grass top leaders. The whole purpose, then the whole kind of angle is for the Red Cross to support the community, to provide trainings, to provide resources, but really for the community to own this initiative and feel like if they're empowered to be able to respond if there's a disaster. You know, a lot of times we talk about it, if there is a disaster, folks are going to need two to three days worth of food and water. Well, that's not the case, it's actually two weeks, as we've seen with larger scale disasters. A lot of times people have it in their mind that, you know, help is going to be on its way quickly. That's not always the case, it's always, you know, your neighbor, your neighborhood, your community that is helping respond in the moment. Of course, resiliency, a development of community-based and led resiliency and preparedness. Again, it's all about empowering a community, residents, a business community to feel like if they're empowered, and that's really through the support of the Red Cross and the partnerships that we make throughout the city. Leadership development, again, we're, you know, our goal is to recruit, recruit stakeholders, recruit, recruit community members to train and develop local leadership. Next slide, please. So prior, prior to the pandemic, we were so focused on, you know, the usual suspects of disasters, right? Wildfires, local home fires, earthquakes, and then the pandemic hit, and it kind of really opened our eyes to a whole new disaster that we weren't really talking about. So now we've incorporated COVID-19 into our planning. So a lot of it, again, is the community education, the mask wearing, the hand washing, the social distancing, you know, helping spread that message even more than it's already been spread. And again, resources as well, resources is, you know, really important in helping a community be resilient. And that's, you know, one thing that the Red Cross is really good at is convening large groups and finding the resources in the, in the community that, that haven't been found before. So creating partnerships, finding out what the needs are in the community, and it's really about listening to community members and to stakeholders. And then donations, of course, connecting where there are gaps. And community advocacy, one of the things that, you know, during this pandemic, the Red Cross has really been pushing is community advocacy, especially for really vulnerable communities. The equity of vaccine distributions. Just advocating for the community, and a lot of that is, is kind of open discussion, open dialogue, listening to partners, listening to, to residents about what they're facing, the challenges that exist, and, and spreading that message however we can. Next slide, please. So why Baldwin Park? So right now, I am going to talk about the hazards and the risks, and this is really, I'm going to hand it over to our Disaster Program Manager for the Territory, Scott Sapers. He's really going to be my co-captain in all of this. I come in to a city and I look at the partnerships, I look at resources, I look at, you know, I'm the liaison that comes in and is boots on the ground. Scott is my partner that really looks at, okay, you know, he sees things in a different way. He looks at, you know, what can be a hazard in the city, so together we are going to assist into the development of this coalition, so. Next slide, please. All right, so I'm going to hand it over to Scott now, Scott.
Hi everybody, my name's Scott Sapers, I'm the Disaster Program Manager for our area of the American Red Cross. I'm responsible for all of the preparedness, recovery, and response activities that take place for disaster. So I want to go over some of the risks and hazards and threats that we've identified for the Baldwin Park area. As you can see, the National Flood Insurance Program rate maps have not classified Baldwin Park as an area of much chance of flooding. Only minor flooding has occurred in the past, and most of those storm waters were easily handled by the San Gabriel River. There are concentrations of businesses that have been identified who are involved with hazardous waste materials in some way, and therefore regulated facilities. Those facilities are primarily located along the I-10 corridor. The reason that this impacts us so much is that should there be an incident in one of those facilities, it will impact the freeway, it will impact people's ability to get in and out and reach where they need to go. Earthquake, earthquake is an issue for all of us. Certainly, the world is a much different place than it was a year ago. But all those hazards that we have to worry about are still hazards we have to worry about. There could still be an earthquake, there could still be a wildfire, there could still be all those things during COVID. So there's active seismic faults around Baldwin Park. And due to their, due to the location, you're kind of centered in between the faults, and we have a map for that later. The city will experience a lot of shaking. Not to the point where you'll see like fissures open up, because you don't have, you don't have a fault running through the city, but severe shaking, which was, you know, obviously was going to cause a massive damage. And of course, you're bisected by railways at the 10 freeway, and that brings a number of potential hazards. Being that, you know, any number of things could be being transported. You could have a railway derailment of a railcar carrying hazardous materials that could spread the cloud across your city. These are things that we think about and take into account. Okay, the next slide, please. Okay, so here you see the earthquake hazard. That pretty much covers everything. So we're relative to major faults, we're centrally located. So Baldwin Park is at risk of liquefaction, and liquefaction has nothing to do with water, even though it sounds like it does. What liquefaction is, is soil behaving like water. So if you imagine putting a marble in a glass of sand, it'll sit there on top, and when you start to shake it, that marble will sink down to the bottom. And that's what we see with areas like Baldwin Park that have a looser, sandier base soil. So there is a risk of liquefaction. Next slide, please. As you see, there's not much chance of flooding. If there were, you would see this area would be colored in blue, so you're not seeing that, and so that flooding is not a major concern. Next slide. Okay, Erica, you want to talk about the Social Vulnerability Index? Okay, so the Social Vulnerability Index is an index that's used to to assess what potential folks might be more vulnerable to, not vulnerable to a disaster, but vulnerable to not being able to easily recover from a disaster. And that could be to a number of issues, it could be language barriers, it could be financial barriers, it could be transportation barriers, it could be education barriers. And that's what these, that's what this map represents, is areas and pockets where that's a more major concern. Next slide, please. Okay, so from 2014 to 2019, our Disaster Action Team received 26 service requests in Baldwin Park. Our Disaster Action Team is a team of volunteers that go out in the middle of the night, or whenever we're called, responding to people who've been displaced from their homes due to fire or some other incident. We provide them with immediate assistance so that they have a place to stay and they have the ability to, you know, begin their recovery. The way in which we provide it is one of two ways. We can either do an electronic funds transfer, where we provide them with funds into their account, if they're able to accept that, or we provide them with a preloaded debit card, which they can use either to stay with family and pitch in for groceries, or to get a hotel, or to get whatever it is that that family happens to need in order to recover. Next slide, please.
Okay, I think I take over from now, thank you Scott. But you know what, actually, before I go on, Scott, do you want to mention anything about what were to happen if there was a large-scale disaster? And how we're doing it now as opposed to prior to COVID, what would that look like?
So in the event of a disaster wherein multiple people are displaced, say, a large-scale apartment fire, or something larger than that, where you have multiple families displaced. In the past, we would have opened a shelter, and we would have had those people stay with us in the shelter until such time as they were able to move on. Now with COVID, we're not opening congregating, congregant shelters, because we're trying to limit the spread of COVID among not only our clients, but our staff. So what we're doing is, in the event of a situation like that, we open what's called a temporary evacuation point, or TEP. That's typically a parking lot with access to restrooms, where we have folks drive in, we maintain traffic control, keeping everybody in their cars. And we then individually work with them to get them housed in a hotel or motel nearby. So we have basically three tiers. We'll start off with the hotel and motel nearby. If we have to, we'll expand outward away from Baldwin Park if we need to, if they can't support that number of people in the hotels due to room availability. And as an absolute last resort, we can open a COVID, a COVID congregant shelter, but that's an absolute last resort. If that's done, then it's opened very differently from Red Cross shelters you may have seen in the past. In a COVID congregant shelter, for instance, there'd be a quarantine area for those that are ill. Everyone would be screened coming in and going out with, with non-contact thermometers, as well as being asked screening questions, and there would be obviously a limited capacity. So where we would be able to have had, you know, X number of people in a room before, now with COVID, the distance apart needs to be greater. So the more separation, so less people. So that's, but that's an absolute last case scenario, and we're trying to avoid congregant shelters if at all possible during COVID.
Thank you Scott. Okay, so just some of the offerings of Prepare L.A., which we will bring, again, life-saving services. We offer preparedness courses from anywhere to kindergarten to seniors and everything in between. So it's very tailored to meet the, the age group that we are presenting to. Support, facilitation, coordination, and organizing, convening. Again, like I mentioned earlier, we're really great at bringing groups together and getting groups to talk about preparedness and resiliency. So for example, reaching out to the school district and finding out what they, what they do in terms of emergency services and connecting them to other organizations and vice versa. Again, and a lot of it's a lot of conversations surrounding emergency preparedness and finding out what the community wants as well. Finding out what the community is interested in, and then how can we support that? Next, next please. And the way we really kind of approach this is the four pillars of resiliency. We talk about preparedness, we talk about the important, we, we talk about volunteers and, and what is available in the community. Again, community responding to community, understanding hazards, it's really important for community members to start saying, what are the hazards in their community? Start thinking about outside of their community as well, if they go out, you know, to another city to work. Having that plan so they can get back to their family, and, you know, it's kind of all related. And then resources, looking for the resources in the city, and then connecting that to, connecting that all around. Next slide, please. So some of the resources right now, just specifically, so virtual preparedness shows for children, prepare you for individuals, seniors, seniors and teens, these are all done virtually. For the business community, the continuity of operations, so planning for businesses. We have seen that, you know, a community's ability to bounce back is dependent on how businesses are able to bounce back. And then high school clubs virtually. Post-COVID is first aid, CPR, and certificate training, that's one of the, the offerings that we offer to our other coalitions and other cities that is really popular amongst residents and stakeholders as well. And then the free smoke alarms and fire safety education. Last year, when we had to cancel the kickoff, this coalition kickoff, we also had to cancel our Sound the Alarm event that was, that was scheduled for April, April 2020. We were, you know, that's a great event where the community comes out, the stakeholders come out, and we go into individuals' homes, and we install fire alarms while providing them with preparedness education. We are looking at different ways to, to be able to move forward with the free smoke alarm program. You know, in the past couple of months, home fires have been so high. And it's really the result of just folks not having smoke alarms, you know, there's lots of life because smoke alarms give those individuals the, the few seconds, minutes that they need to get out of their home. Next slide, please. So just a few, read a history of partnerships and activities in Baldwin Park. So we have installed 217 alarms in 37, in 37 homes to date. We really hope to really increase that number once we're able to, and really saturate the community and hopefully get as many fire alarms as we can into, into homes, into apartment units, mobile home parks as well. So we're really hoping to be able to move forward with the home fire campaign. Youth clubs, really important to the community as well. Active volunteers, we currently have 26 residents listed as volunteers, and that includes youth, the majority of that is actually youth. And then faith affiliates, faith affiliates are partnerships that the Red Cross has with local churches. And again, providing services to those local churches. Service to armed forces, 40 people, we have, in the city of Baldwin Park, have received services from our service to armed forces. So we can definitely increase those numbers and make sure that individuals know that we provide these resources for our veterans and our active military members. And to date, we have presented to 744 children through the Pillowcase Project. Next slide, please. So again, this is a community partnership, you know, the Red Cross, we want to support the community, we want the commit, the community to, to feel resilient, to feel empowered, and really kind of have the community take this on as their own with our support, of course. Next slide, please. So what are the next steps? So, you know, ongoing individual stakeholder meetings, you know, thankfully, prior to the pandemic, I was, I was able to, to meet with a lot of the organizations in Baldwin Park, thankfully. So it's kind of just re-engagement of those, of those partners. And our community leaders briefing kickoff on February 23rd, the city was very kind to be able to, you know, show this on the YouTube channel, so hopefully we get this to as many partners, residents as possible. And if individuals are interested, they can join the following month where we're officially going to have our meetings surrounded regarding our resiliency. And take the pledge, make the commitment, you know, we have our stakeholder sign pledge forms, so, so they feel committed, and they feel like if they're going to really buy into this initiative. The meetings will be monthly, as of right now, they will be offered virtually. We understand that, you know, virtual meetings, you know, folks, after a long day of meetings or going to work and having your kids online distancing, the last thing you want to do maybe is join another meeting. But, you know, we're going to take this in steps, where our plan is to grow this coalition and, you know, just build, just lay down the groundwork, and hopefully, once we're able to be back in person, it'll really take off. Okay, next slide, please. Are there any questions that I can take for, for me or for Scott?
Yeah, is there any questions or comments from council or city staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, go ahead Paul, I mean, sorry, Councilmember Hernandez.
No problem, thank you. Again, Erica, thank you very much for, for your presentation, and Scott, you know, this is, as you mentioned, a long time coming, you know, I think when we signed the MOU was close to maybe about 15 or 18 months ago, maybe 16 months ago. Out of a conversation that we had, oh God, and with Ms. Norma Vega quite some time ago, so I'm really excited, you know, for this, and I'm really hoping that each of our council members and mayor will open up their rolodex to help identify other community stakeholders that might be interested in joining the, the coalition. You know, one of the things that I certainly believe is, you know, neighbors helping neighbors, and that's exactly what the mission is of, of Red Cross. You know, from the times that we, the city has called them, or I've used them in other capacities, it's, you know, it's residents that are, you know, coming out to help somebody in their need. So, you know, that's something that's, you know, is very much ingrained in our city with our residents. You know, we're all willing to help one another, so I suspect that you might have a fairly large coalition, especially if, you know, each of our council members, you know, tries to commit, you know, at least finding three or five people that they could, you know, submit names and telephone numbers for you to contact Erica at a later time would certainly help grow the coalition and make our city that much more paired, but more importantly, safer, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Councilmember Hernandez. It's been great, you know, working with you and working with the city staff on, on this initiative, you know, and just hoping to move forward with this and get this going as soon as we can. And one thing I did fail to mention is, you know, hopefully it goes without saying, but all of these services are free, there's no cost to trainings or with the home fire campaign. You know, we, you know, we're here to support the community and to partner with the community.
Erica, did you announce a time yet for the town hall meeting on the 23rd so that we can help get the word out?
Yep, the meeting starts at 5 o'clock, 5 to 6:30. So we chose an evening time, and hopefully more people can join. And, you know, again, this is a process, so if I have to go and make a special presentation, if Scott and I have to go and make a presentation to the school district, or make another presentation to the Business Association, we're more than open to do that. This, this, you know, it's a new virtual world, it's been a year, but, you know, we're all still learning. This, you know, it's a new virtual world, it's been a year, but, you know, we're all still learning.
Thank you. Great. Is there any more questions or concerns from city staff or council? No? Well, I thank you for your time, Erica, and of course, Scott, and I think I've spoken to you a long time ago.
Yeah, I remember that, the coffee bean.
That is right. You know, and I'm excited to see that there's a partnership going and, you know, the pandemic has really shown us why it's so important, right, that we work together and that we have a very strong sense of community. And I think, you know, there's, you know, a lot of that can come out of this, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And on the next slide is my phone number and my email address. Anybody can feel free to contact me. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. So at this point, we can move on to public communications. City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
Yes, we have four speakers and I'm going to defer to our deputy city clerk.
Great.
Thank you, City Clerk and Mayor. We have Mr. John Reels.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Reels, this is Mayor Estrada. I am calling you regarding your request to speak. You have three minutes, okay?
Okay, let's start with, before I even start talking, the last time, you guys already had the clock running. And by the time I started talking, it was already two minutes and 15 seconds, okay?
Okay.
Okay, I will start now. Okay, one of the things that, to the chief of police, I have requested a couple of times to talk to him and he doesn't return my calls. I've called the detective bureau and they don't return my calls either, okay? Another thing is two weeks ago, when the people talked about, there was streets were dirty and there was trash here and there. If they're so concerned about that, all they have to do is call Public Works and they'll take care of it. I usually call them up within the same day or the following day, they pick it up. And if I see something that's not proper things, I call the code enforcement and they do their jobs. Right away, you know, they'll call up, I tell them where it is and everything, and they'll do their jobs. So I don't know what those people were complaining about. If they really wanted the city to look better, that's all they have to do. Call Public Works or the code enforcers, they take care of it. Okay? And that other thing about putting the council chambers under the sun, oh, come on, give me a break. 20 years of taking away from the community? What are those people thinking about? You know? The way you answer on the newspaper, it was beautiful. Everybody prays you, Mayor, on what you said at the end of that article. And that's about it, you know, so have a good evening.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening, Mr. Reels.
Okay.
City Clerk, who is next?
Catherine Lozier.
Hello?
Hi, is this Catherine Lozier?
Yes, yes, it is.
This is Mayor Estrada. I am calling you regarding your request for public communication. You have three minutes, okay?
Great, thank you so much. So again, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, community partners, and fellow community members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As mentioned, my name is Catherine Lozier and I'm the Community Library Manager of the Baldwin Park Library. Tonight, I wanted to just take a moment to speak about the library, the LA County Library's Business Resource Center and a new partnership the library has with LACMA or the Los Angeles County Museum of Art. For those who are feeling confused about the recent GameStop saga or who wanted to know more about the basics of investing in stocks, you can visit the LA County Library's Digital Business Resource Center on our website at lacountylibrary.org. We have a multitude of free business resources in print and online. We have courses on stocks and how capital markets work through a subscription to Lynda.com. We have digital current newspapers, or excuse me, news and business magazines through overdrive like The Economist and Newsweek. And of course, we have books on the subject. Whatever your business needs, the LA County Library has you covered. And then the LA County Library has partnered with LACMA, the Los Angeles County Museum of Art, to bring a virtual art program to our communities featuring the LACMA teaching artists and staff. We have two programs, the first is a series called Creative Storytelling and that's for children. The workshop starts with a story reading and then that story is brought to life through a variety of expressive art activities based on specific artists with focus led by LACMA teaching artists. The stories are based on monthly themes and the theme for February is cultural identity and for March will be female artists. These programs take place on the first and third Friday of each month at 4 o'clock. And then the second program series is Creative Careers, Museums, and the Arts, and that's for kids and teens. And these programs are for those who want to learn about art-related careers that exist in creative places like museums. And they'll feature the LACMA staff who will discuss what they do and the journey to take them there. And the programs are on the fourth Thursday of the month at 4:00 p.m. And the next one will be February 25th at 4:00. And it will be a content specialist for mobile programs. And you'll learn how the content specialists develop interactive resources for mobile classes and how did they incorporate those aspects into museum services. So for any more information on these resources, on programs, or any library services, you can give me a call at the Baldwin Park Library at 626-962-6947 or visit us at the lacountylibrary.org. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you for that, thank you for that information. I just want to let you know, I do like the way you connected the library to GameStop stocks.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening. City Clerk, who is next?
The next caller is Mr. Greg Tuttle.
Hello?
Mr. Tuttle, this is Emmanuel. I am calling you from a city council meeting and I heard you wanted to speak, so you have three minutes, okay?
All right, thank you very much. Start now?
Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Okay, first off, I want to mention about your city clerk, Marlene Garcia and the deputy city clerk. They're not doing their job. When you have over a year and a half back of minutes of the meetings that haven't been written into the online stuff, you have committed a crime with the Brown Act. You need to keep the minutes of the meeting up. I know Marlene used to just tell everybody what to do when she was councilperson, but now she needs to do a real job, which is keep the minutes of these meetings up current. And the last I could see was from October and September of 2019, that's uncalled for. Also, I'd like to know why Monica doesn't show her face on the thing when, especially when she's voting, which I think is irregular for voting because we need to know that it's her voting, not just her voice. So I don't know why Monica thinks she has to hide behind the thing there and doesn't show her face like everybody else does. Now then, on the you have the electricity company that you guys have formed for the city. This thing here is gonna cost the people more money and is going to get people more aggravated. And you're gonna end up losing money when this all comes out to where everybody opts out, when they figure out that they should have opted out before. So I don't know why this thing keeps going on, but the problem is the people are going to be very upset. I get people coming in here telling me their rates are higher. I say, send me the bill so we can see this stuff and prove it. But the thing is, the city is making money on their own residents and charging more money and we need to stop this program. This program's a sham. All the cities are trying to get into it, now they're getting caught in legal issues and lawsuits. And now you're gonna put in a letter of credit because you had to post up a bond for the money for purchasing this electricity. You have to buy in volume and when you don't have customers to purchase that, you're gonna be stuck with it when these people stop and opt out of this. And then they're gonna be upset because they gotta pay to opt out because it was all done the wrong way and wasn't allowing the people to opt in if they wanted to and not to put them into it unless they said no. So you did it completely backwards and you didn't put it in the Spanish and you tricked the people. I'm not talking about the current council, I'm talking about the past council. They know who they are. And I think that we need to get going on our new management team. You guys are kinda, I feel dragging your feet on here. We need a city manager, we need a city attorney. We need to clean up these dirty city attorney firms that you have.
Your three minutes are up.
Because they're costing you thousands of dollars a month. You need to start looking into this and clean this stuff up. It is unbelievable what they're doing. So please, get this stuff rolling, get these attorney firms that are killing you on money out of there. Tofora is one of your biggest nightmares. You got attorney named Medina. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, and I believe we have one more caller, correct?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Javier Navarro.
Hello?
Hi, is this Mr. Javier Navarro?
Yes.
Hi, this is Mayor Estrada, city of Baldwin Park. I believe you made a request to speak, so you have three minutes, okay?
Yes, I did. Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. Okay, first of all, I wanna, I need some feedback on what I was told three months ago about the no lighting on Ramona. I was told three months ago exactly that it was gonna be taken care of this past January. Here we are, first weekend in February, nothing has happened. It's so dark, especially in front of the senior center, a parking lot. I mean, what are you waiting till? I mean, I've I just heard that there were some vandalized city vehicles. I mean, you gotta start with lighting right there. That's the first step. I mean, what are you waiting for? For something worse to happen? Somebody getting mugged, you know? I mean, I mean, this is ridiculous. I mean, this is not a problem from three months ago. This is a problem a year, two years ago. I mean, somebody is not keeping the public informed of what's going on, what's happening. You talk in your meetings about doing this, doing that, but there's no feedback. That's part of the problem from the old city council. So, I mean, I I mean, after the public communications, I'd like to hear where your feedback is on that. Thank you for listening to me. Bye.
Yeah, great. Thank you for that. City Clerk, was that our last caller?
Yes, Mayor.
Great. So I do believe Sam, I think Sam can update us. I believe the lights on Ramona by that senior center, are they part of that downtown update?
Yeah, hi, good evening, Mayor. That is absolutely correct. So the project is already on the way. We had our pre-construction meeting. The streetlights, all of the streetlights have already been delivered, they're in storage at the city yard and we're gonna start that project next week. So you'll start seeing some activity, you'll start seeing all those lights being restored.
Great, thank you. And then I know that, and I don't know, Manny Carrillo wants to comment, but I know that I've kind of been, you know, talking with Manny and Shannon and we're working on making sure that, you know, there's better communication between the city and our constituents and keeping them up to date so that they're aware of our events, our our news and anything and everything and everything in between, isn't that right?
Yes, we are. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we are working on a video element of the Baldwin Park now and we're working hard on social media to kick off our campaign. Let's Get Social, something we want to strengthen. And also in regards to the gentleman, Mr. Navarro, that mentioned the lights at Morgan Park, we are working. We have some additional lights that are out in the park and we are working with the vendor. We are holding them accountable and they're shipping us parts and we keep on going back and forth. But we will rectify those lights very soon. Well, thank you.
Great, thank you. And I know that Mr. Reels did give kudos to Public Works and I want to second that. I know Sam and his team have been doing really well picking up the trash and going after graffiti and and even during COVID times, they've done a really good job. So, you know, I want to let them know that we're all aware of that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Of course. So, I believe, yes, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, I wanted to add to that. I know Ms. Alicia, the last meeting, she brought up the concern about the trash and around the freeway areas. And like you said, Public Works has been working around that and I just talked to Sam and Anthony, as a matter of fact, to confirm that it is the area that Caltrans handles. So what they are doing is they're keeping in close contact with Caltrans to make sure that they're keeping those areas clean because as the city, we're not allowed to go into those areas. So they're gonna be keeping in contact with them to make sure that those areas are kept clean. But we do appreciate the residents calling us and informing us of the problem areas so that we can keep up with that. So I just wanted to update Ms. Alicia on that.
Great, thank you. Is there any other comments from any other council members or city staff? If not, we can move on and we can go on to the consent calendar.
Can I close in memory of somebody before we go on?
Yes, of course. Go ahead.
Okay, I want to close in memory of Mr. Joe Sanchez. He was my neighbor many years ago. He's a former resident of Baldwin Park now. Today at 6:15 this evening, I received a text that he lost his battle against cancer. He lives behind his wife, four children, and eight grandchildren. He now lives in Texas. He's a veteran of Vietnam War. He was, he was one of the first families we met when we moved here to Baldwin Park to this house. So very close to our heart and he will miss, he missed dearly. My condolences to the family. Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, I believe it was this week or maybe at the end of last week, we heard about Pastor Kana from our Lady of Guadalupe in the city of Irwin though, which I'm sure a lot of Baldwin Park residents go to, you know, because it's nearby the upper side of Baldwin Park. And of course, you know, we know that, you know, he's been instrumental in in affecting a lot of our families, including mine on a personal level. So I want to close on behalf of him. Is there any other council, any other person, council members might want to close on behalf of?
Mayor, I'd like to give my condolences, you know, for their loss. And I would also like to thank Pastor Flores for his prayer earlier for those who are sick and suffering with COVID-19 and with different illnesses, obviously, in our community. And I did want to mention that one of our commissioners, Cecilia Bernal, has been in the hospital and she's battling COVID. It sounds like she's Um, it sounds like she's um getting better, but I I did, I did want to extend. Um, you know, our support and and just our care and our our um appreciation and our love for her. Um, from the dais because, you know, praying that she will um get strong and, you know, praying for healing for her. Uh, but I just wanted to mention, you know, her and then also thank Pastor Flores uh for his prayer for our community and especially in that way. Thank you.
Yeah, of course, and I've only I've only gotten to meet her, you know, uh recently, and I know that she is a a a uh. You know, a great member of the community. I know she's very involved in 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 the church and I know that she's very involved in outreach and I and I, you know, I have all the respect for her for for doing so. And, you know, of course, I want to see her get better and continue being the great member of our city that she is.
Thank you, Monica, for informing us of that. Uh, I I agree Cecilia is a great person. My prayers go out to you, Cecilia. I'm hoping you get well really soon.
Great, so at this point, we can move on to the consent calendar. Uh, is there any items uh that you are looking to pull council members?
Mayor, I'll pull item number four.
Alright, okay, and I'll pull uh item number three. Is there any other items? No, if not, at this point, I'll make a motion to pass. Items one through seven, except three and four on the consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, any objections? No, so that motion passes and uh we can go with the number four first. Councilmember Damian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so Ben, I wanted to see, uh, got a couple of questions for you. Um, I did hear Mr. Tuttle say that on the uh public speaking that the um. The BP Proud program was charging more. Um, I had heard the same complaints from different residents in the city over the last week or so. So what I did was I reached out to someone who had, who did not opt out of the program. And I requested an invoice from them prior to Be Proud and one after Be Proud. And I compared it to my bill as well. So just so we could get clarification, Ben, for the residents and for us as well. Do you know more or less what it is that the BP Proud program charges us per kilowatt? On tier one, tier two, and on the uh high usage charge?
Thank you, coun- thank you, council member. Um, I would have to look up that information specifically. I don't have it handy. I don't know if Shannon can answer that. I I doubt he would have that as well. We do have Kathy DeFalcio here uh with the uh Cow Choice uh. Uh, uh, company that that assists us with the program. I'm not sure if she can. I may have to uh look up that question and and provide you an answer later. Kathy?
And and my understanding is that the rates um at the current time are exactly the same as Edison's. Um, but I don't have the information regarding the tiers. And Kathy, if you are able to answer that question?
Um, I I do not have the exact rates, um, but you are correct. Every rate structure is at parity, there is no difference. Um, if you're comparing a bill that was prior to the implementation of Be Proud versus one after. There may have been other changes that occur. There are there are frequently changes on the transmission and delivery side, which is um always billed by Edison. It is is not part of the BP Proud program. That could have impacted that, but if you have a specific bill, we would be happy to do a bill comparison.
And if I could, if I could add too, um, there's summer rates and winter rates. So if comparing a bill from the summer to the winter, it may be different. But I would encourage any resident that has a question on their bill to um contact us. And we will answer those questions directly for each and every one of them.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Thank you. So, Mr. Damian, I didn't opt out. I went ahead and I I went with Be Proud so I could see uh compare and see what the difference was. The bill looks exactly the same. Everything looks exactly the same and I actually, my bill is smaller. Um, I don't know if that's going to change in the future, but I have a big household here. And I actually have seen uh savings. I can't compare, I I haven't really sat there and compared the kilowatts or anything that of usage. But I know for a fact I'm not using any less than I ever do. But the the cost of my bill is lower than it has been in the past. So I just wanted to add that since I did not opt out and and I went with BP Proud just to to uh. To know what the the residents were looking at, so.
So I did, I so I have two bills. One of them was from November from this person. And the other one was uh for January twenty fifth. Um, and then mine I pulled was for January twenty seventh so that I can more or less kind of get an accurate. Uh, you know, because obviously we spend more energy during the December holidays, right? Christmas lights, so forth and so on. But one of the things that I found under the kilowatt tiers, one, two, and three. Is that under currently under SCE, they're billing fifteen cents per kilowatt under tier one. Nineteen cents per kilowatt under tier two. And twenty-three cents per kilowatt on the high usage charge. With BP Proud, we're basically ten cents lower from what I'm looking at uh per kilowatt. So for example, tier one, they're charging five cents. Tier two, they're charging nine cents. And tier three, which is what the high usage charge, they're charging fourteen cents. So if we could just get clarification to make sure that I'm I'm reading this bill correctly cuz I'm honestly, I'm not an electrical expert. So I don't really know how to really read these bills, but just so we could get clarification. Because if this is accurate, that way we can kind of get it to the residents out there, let them know, hey, look. Don't just look at your overall amount that you paid because you're comparing it to the winter holidays where you're using your, you know, your heater and the Christmas lights. Look at the kilowatt per charge. That way we can get clarification on that. And then the second thing was. If someone did not opt out when they had the opportunity to opt out the first time. And they decide they wanna opt out now, will they be charged to opt out or will they be opt out free of charge?
They are allowed to opt out after the free period. Um, it's a very small charge. I believe it's fifty cents, is that right, Ben?
My understanding, is that right, Kathy, fifty cents?
Yeah, it's it's less than a dollar. It's, I don't recall the exact amount, but it's it is less than a dollar.
Okay, and just again, just so that we can kind of, you know, get more clarification on this cuz I know there's a lot of confusion. And there's a lot of people saying you're spending more money. Let's just kind of, you know, really get to the bottom of it, the needy greedy. What is it that they're paying versus what they would pay with SCE? So we can relate this out to our residents and let them know, look, this is what the deal is here. Because if we just tell them, compare your bills, honestly, it's not the easiest thing to to look at. So that way we can get get more clarification on it and we can just kind of educate our residents a little bit more. And then this way, at the end of the day, if they do wanna opt out, that's their decision. But at least they opted out because they wanted to and not believed that that they were gonna be charged more. Thank you, Mayor, that was all I had.
Yeah, and then um, you know, I know, I know that it's it's a it's a little bit of a difficult um. Program to understand. I know a lot of people have been asking about it. Uh, but I I think one of the most important one things is uh, you know, the opt-in, opt-out. Uh, it it had to be for them to opt out, is that correct?
The the way this statute was written, and this was adopted back in two thousand and two. Uh, it was kind of a a reaction to the energy crisis of the early two thousands. But the way this statute is written is uh as an opt-out program. So the CCA, Be Proud, um, none of the other CCAs have any um control over that. It's it's mandated by statute.
Yes, we're we're just following state law and that's um exactly what the state law mandates.
Great, and and I and I just wanted to make that clear cuz I know that, you know, when I first started learning about it, that was one of my concerns, right? Why are we forcing people to get in and then they have to make the effort to opt out? But, you know, very, I I I just wanted to confirm that way everybody's aware that, you know, it's it's not our choice. It's just the way that things were were written, right?
Yeah, we i- it's very driven by um uh rules and guidelines and statutes. So we, you know, it's very specific, the rules that uh Baldwin Park has to follow in regards to its CCA.
Great, thank you, thank, thank you. I, that was why uh, that was my comment. I don't know, uh, councilmember Damian, do you have any more comments on this?
Uh, no, Mayor, I just, I just basically wanted to get it for clarification because I know that there's a lot of residents saying that they're paying more. Uh, again, I just wanted to make sure that we get clarification on it. Um, and, you know, just kind of provide a little bit more education as to uh what the real charge is in the future, thank you.
Great, did you wanna make a motion?
That's right, uh, I will make a motion to approve item number four.
Great, uh, any objections? No, so motion passes. And then, of course, item number three, I think it's it's personally, I mean, you know, I think it's an important item. I I didn't think it was, it was meant to be passed with the consent calendar. And I don't know, city attorney could just give us a little bit of a of a background on it, just so everybody's aware of what's going on.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, um, it is an important item for our city. Um, Rookly uh used to be our ex- exclusive distributor. Um, uh, at the time that they uh were awarded that uh permit and that contract. Uh, the city believed that there were very good reasons to have an exclusive distributor. So we're only dealing with one entity. Um, the ex- the distributor has to collect taxes, has to go take the product to the tester. It has to do track and trace so it makes sure that uh everything is being done legally and appropriately. So the job that a distributor does is very, very important. And at the time, we thought it would work best if we only had to deal with one company. Um, as it turned out, it hasn't worked very well for the city for a number of different reasons that I I don't think it's important to go into now. But it just didn't seem to be working out very good. Um, as a result of that, we entered into negotiations with Rookly to try and uh get rid of the exclusive agreement. Allow the city to uh use other distributors in addition to Rookly. So Rookly will still be a distributor, but will not be the exclusive distributor. And that makes it better for our operators. Our operators have different choices that they can go to. Uh, some of our operators, I believe, have even expressed an interest in buying a distribution permit from the city. So by doing this, uh, it's going to bring additional revenue to the city in the form of selling uh distributor licenses. In addition, I think it's going to expand uh what we already have in terms of our cannabis industry. And I think it will make it more robust. Uh, the and when you have other operators allowed to distribute their own product. Or uh using other distributors that they are friendly with and they do good business with. Um, and it could be Rookly, we don't know that, but the that 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 gives all of our operators a choice. And uh I think, as I said, uh, it will bring a lot of additional revenue into the city. And I think it's a very important step forward for our cannabis industry here in Baldwin Park.
Great, thank you for that. I I, you know, I'm I'm sure, you know. We are all looking forward to the, I think it's a an opportunity for the city and I I'm sure, you know, we're all looking forward to it. Like, as I said, you know, it's an important uh piece of of uh paperwork. And I didn't think it had to go through the consent calendar. I don't know if any other council members uh have any comments regarding it, if not. Mr. Mayor?
Mayor? I think we all do.
Yeah, it was a. That was all three of you, we'll just go down the list, so Mayor Pro Tem, you you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, that was a challenging one. I I have to agree, the negotiations with Rookly was very challenging. The goal was to uh get rid of that exclusive contract. Which Robert worked very hard going back and forth, back and forth, negotiating this, getting ideas from council members, from the mayor. Okay, what 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 can we do? What what do we do? Back and forth, there was a back and forth, Robert, and I wanna thank you for uh not giving in and not giving up. And getting us a a better opportunity uh to make more money, to provide better services for our our, all our distribution. People that would maybe applying. You say we have a lot of people that want to apply for distribution and that will bring more income to our city. And more income to our city more means more income to our residents, more uh. Things that can happen, positive things that can happen for our our residents. So again, thank you, Robert, for for working with us and and being patient with us because we did ask a lot about you. You were put in the frontline, really. We we did give you the orders like they do in the military and you went to the frontline and you took care of it. So thank you so much for working diligently uh and getting this contract, exclusive contract out of the way. So now more people have the opportunity to be distributors and uh I think everybody else will be happy. Uh, we can uh now do business with more people, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
And then I believe, uh, councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize the team efforts um to get this done. And um, you know, like I've mentioned in the past, high five to everyone who put our heads together and we're very solutions oriented. Um, I wanna give special recognition, if I may, to councilmember Damian and councilmember Hernandez. Um, I know that this was a council effort, um, but I just truly appreciated the leadership on this. And uh, I also wanna acknowledge city attorney Tafoya for all your diligence. And for taking direction from council and being flexible. And uh being the face and the spokesperson, you know, with Rookly, um, because I know that that came with its challenges. And so wanna acknowledge your efforts, thank you so much. Um, really quick, I wanted our city attorney to speak to, if you may, if you could. And I'm sorry, I didn't give you the heads up on this. But what I don't want is for some of the existing operators to look to the Rookly agreement. And think that that is what's going to set the, you know, that will, that will be what is set moving forward. Um, as we look at distribution licenses, fees and terms of uh. You know, the terms of condition or the the conditions, the terms of engagement, I guess. Um, so can you speak a little bit to that? Um, city attorney? Thank you.
Certainly, councilmember Garcia. Um, yeah, so the the terms of the settlement agreement with Rookly are exactly that. That's a settlement agreement. And the reason why uh that agreement's gonna look different than an agreement that we would enter into with the distributors going forward. Is because we had to compromise um in order to get uh that exclusive license back to us. And so that was the reason why you may see uh the cost for the distribution uh uh permit in the settlement agreement. That will be different from a cost that we may ask other distributors to pay. And certainly I would expect that to be the case because the distributor license is very valuable. Um, there are companies out there making millions of dollars um distributing cannabis products. And so while we did have to compromise with Rookly and come in at a much lower uh price than we would otherwise have done. Um, in the future, I do believe that uh that price structure will change. But the council has given me very uh strict direction to make sure that it's fair to everybody and the same for everybody. And so whoever is going to apply for a distribution permit and license, whatever price the council ends up putting at that. Uh, uh, and that will be on recommendation based on market prices and based on surveys that we're doing in other cities on what other cities charge. Uh, but whatever that will be, it will be fair and it'll be the same for everybody. But it will not be uh what uh the Rookly agreement is because it was a settlement agreement that we had to compromise. And we were essentially buying back the exclusive agreement that we had provided to them. And so uh going forward, of course, we're not gonna be buying back from anybody. We're gonna be giving them, we're going to be uh providing them an opportunity to run a distribution business. And that comes with costs to the city. And so we have to uh make up our costs for doing that and for being able to uh award those licenses. And in addition, we'll do what's called mitigation costs. Because there's a uh, there's, there's a mitigation that we would like to do where there'll be some uh uh vehicles traveling through the city. We wanna medic mitigate that impact for our residents. And that will come in the form of uh a mitigation fee that will be paid to the city. And then we'll be able to put that into our general fund and use that for city services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, uh, councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, both uh Mayor Pro Tem, uh. Avila and also councilmember Garcia already have eloquently already spoken. Uh, so I just wanted to again thank uh. Sorry, I just wanna make sure that I thank uh, you know, our entire staff uh for moving forward on this project. Uh, it is something that uh has been ongoing for for quite some time. Uh, maybe I think close to maybe six months or eight months, if if my memory serves me correct. So again, thank you, uh, Robert, uh, Ben and Shannon for uh, you know, moving forward. And more importantly, uh, you know, as I see this also is, it's a way to, you know. Um. Move forward in a new direction that will provide uh better uh and enhanced services for the cannabis industry in our city. So thank you.
Great, thank you for that. I think it's a uh.
Mister Mayor, if I may for just one moment. I really wanted to thank uh the city staff and the team because. Because uh I could not have done this without Ben Martinez, Ron Garcia and all the other people over in the Community Development Department. They had meetings with me, they had meetings with Rookly, they reviewed uh documents, they provided me documents. Uh, it truly, truly, truly was a team effort. And I want to recognize those team members and the people that they worked with as well. Couldn't have done it without them. Thank you, Ben and Ron and all of your team.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, of course, you know, I know Ben and his team are always uh, are always working diligently, especially when it comes to these types of things. And of course, Robert, you know, we're all thankful for you and making it happen. You're you're the you're the person that, you know, you're there, dude.
Thank you.
Back of a better word, right? So, you know.
And you've had me smiling this whole time.
Oh, you know, I'm obviously excited, thankful. I think it's a great way to start 2021. And and it's and it's a and it's a great sign of what this council is going to be able to accomplish with our city staff when we work together. So with that being said, uh, motion to pass, item number three.
I will second.
I think we all say second.
Any objections? None? Great, so motion passes. Um, and then I believe at this point, uh, we are done with our agenda and we go on to a city council comment. And I believe there's one by Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, I asked that this item be agendaized because there have been several incidents where um, out of a like a outage. Uh, power outage or maybe an accident, um, there's been the traffic signal lights that have gone dark. And there haven't been any, um, you know, there I, to my knowledge, there isn't like a protocol that's triggered when that happens. And um, as I did some investigating, I learned that our city vehicle code actually advises that we not put any like stop signage or um, any traffic control. And I think it goes back to liability issues, which I fully understand. But when I look at it from the confusion that it may cause at an intersection and I look at it from like the public safety perspective. Um, that has, you know, caused me concern and that's why I asked that this item be agendaized. I know that some cities follow a similar um thinking and code as our city. While others, like I was passing through the city of Arcadia um, the other day. And they had stop signs and a police officer at the intersection where their traffic signal lights were out. So um, with that, I'd like to ask Sam Bicatres, our Director of Public Works, to speak to this item. And I just wanted us to be aware of the policy and see if we can um, think of something that is a little bit, you know, safer and more responsive. While still uh protecting the city, the city's liability. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sam. I know, Sam, you had prepared um to speak on this item. And you were bringing forward some uh plans and, you know, some um, maybe some new policies for discussion. So I'll turn that over to you.
Yes, uh, thank you, um, Councilmember Garcia. Um, yeah, I I I do have um, you know, prepared some uh points to to talk about this. So generally, um, the the city of Baldwin Park, our our policy right now is not to put up um, uh, stop signs during uh an event where the traffic signal is inoperable. And I certainly understand that uh pulling up to an intersection that is inoperable um can be confusing, especially to some drivers. Um, but it is not uh is not considered uh dangerous, at least not in the legal sense. Uh, because uh inoperative signals are automatically converted into into stop signs by statute. And um, so from our experience, you know, pulling up into an intersection that is inoperable and uh there are stop signs. That can also uh prove to be confusing to some drivers. And while it it is intuitive uh to do so, to think that, you know, putting up stop signs will make it safer. Um, you know, there are situations where it ha- has not worked so well. But it does introduce uh liability issues to the city. And and the biggest concern is creating a situation where contradictory signage and traffic devices uh can lead to conflict being and unsafe traffic movement once the power is restored. Um, so uh sometimes, you know, these stop signs, when they're placed there, um, they they have, I've been in situations where they have gotten hit and caused uh more uh disruption and chaos. Uh, they're typically placed between lane lines and they're not designed to be placed there, even though it's temporary. But the biggest issue is that uh unscheduled and unforeseen area-wide outages are unpredictable. And uh the range of time that an outage can can last uh varies from outage to outage. So, you know, and they also tend to be uh localized, meaning it's not just one intersection that goes down, it's several. And now we have to go out and put stop signs in uh in all of them. Um, and coordinating and placing and removing signs can be tricky and expensive. Uh, like the example you mentioned from Monrovia, uh, yeah, there were signs, but there was an officer there and that could that could prove to be expensive. And yeah, um, it would be, it would be difficult um, uh, to. Uh, and quite frankly, the city doesn't have uh the resources to provide round-the-clock staffing to respond to every eventuality. Even uh, you know, particularly when the law says, uh, you know, motorists, uh, you know, learn how to behave during the circumstances. So having said that, uh, we are open to uh placing stop signs. Uh, and and I think it'll be a good practice to do it on a case-by-case basis, uh, where we can mitigate some of the liability. Uh, one example is where we have clear coordination with uh Edison. And we are staffed, we can um coordinate with them on the uh outage, place the stop signs. And then go out and uh turn off the controller so that it doesn't come back on when the power is restored. They'll let us know when it's restored and then we go out there, remove the stop signs and fire up the controller. Uh, so we've done that. Uh, and also coordinating with uh jurisdictionally wide with other uh jurisdictions. Some of our stop signs are shared jurisdictionally. So uh with Caltrans and Irwin now, and they have a policy of not putting stop signs. So this would apply to um wholly owned intersections maintained by the city. Lastly, I I do want to say that um, there, there is uh an idea to uh add a project to the CIP to upgrade all of our existing traffic signals uh so that they're uh battery battery backup capable. Uh, battery backup um technology has progressed. And today's systems are very robust and can handle most outages. And um, I think that um, by adding a project to the CIP uh and being able to bring all of our intersection signals up to uh, you know, uh battery backup capability. I think that'll help us tremendously in planning and coordinating uh these these events. And if the need be to place stop signs, we coordinate with SCE and um, you know, do it the way I mentioned earlier. The last thing is that there are such things as uh scheduled outages. And scheduled outages, uh, you know, are uh by a permit basis. So Edison comes to us, says they need a permit to work in the city. And then they say, um, you know, the uh, the work is going to cau- cause some intersections to go dark. In that case, we're we're planning on introducing a new fee to our permit for uh scheduled outages. That when Edison Edison comes and pulls out a permit, um, we charge them a fee so that we're compensated for going out there and placing to uh the stop signs. Uh, and that'll have help with recouping some of the costs. So that's pretty pretty much, that's pretty much where we're at.
Yeah, thank you for that thorough um briefing. And it does sound like the stop signs are a Band-Aid approach, right? And tricky in um and spotty. And so I do want to say that I really like the idea of looking at upgrading our our traffic signal lights um as part of the capital improvement plan. And if we do that, what do you think the the process looks like for that and timeline?
So we we can do it two ways. We can um uh budget it and add it to the CIP pro- uh program when when we get to that point. Which would be uh later on this year. Uh, usually that happens around May and June. Um, we do have uh funding for it, so we've we've looked into that. So we think uh we can make it work. We've already asked for uh some quotes to to see where we're at and we think we can make it happen. Um, the other way is to uh by staff report, add it to the current CIP uh that we're working on now. And we can prepare a staff report and uh get working on that. So as soon as we get a council approval, we can start uh putting that project together, putting in design. And um, we can make it happen within a few months.
Okay, well, I am definitely in support of that idea. I don't know if any other um council members or the mayor have any thoughts on that. But I certainly approach the, I I am sorry, I certainly support the that approach of upgrading and um. Yeah, I think that that would probably be the safest. Um, and it probably just needs to be done anyway, just moving into the future.
That is absolutely right.
Do any of the other council members have any thoughts or questions?
Um, just, you know, I know you said you had the funds for this, so you know where the where do the funds come out of the general fund or where they come from in Grant?
No, no, uh, the funds will come from our uh street lighting and uh maintenance, uh, which is um. Uh, our uh, one of our assessments, this is this is uh the funding we use to maintain and pay for all traffic signals citywide.
Great.
We have, we have some, we've realized some savings in in this fund over the years. So we think uh, based on what we're seeing so far, we can easily make it happen. The only question would be, do we add it to the current CIP via a staff report? Or uh would uh council want us to program it for next year's CIP?
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, I would recommend that we move ahead on this. Um, the power outages seem to be more common these days. Edison sometimes shuts them down just because of high winds. Um, I think if Sam can put that together and bring it back to you, I would advise to to move ahead with it. Um, it makes our our city safer for everybody. Um, when there is a power outage, uh, the lights will continue to operate for for um some, quite some time. Because we have the uh energy-saving LED bulbs in there. Um, if it is an extended outage, um, the system sensed that it's going too long, uh, then it'll go to all red flash. Um, which is a warning to us that the batteries are low. Um, but it also provides for a safer uh intersection because everybody knows that a four-way stop, uh, four-way flash i- is the same as a stop sign. And it's very lit up. I know some of the problems that we've seen and and have been reported at night is when, you know, there's a traffic signal out. Sometimes people don't, don't even know it's out because it's so dark. And if they don't know the area, um, they may blow through that, not even realizing that it's a signal. Had they known it's a signal, they might have realized that the law requires them to stop. But if they don't even know the area, uh, it does cause a danger. So yeah, I would, I would um ask if we could move this along quickly. I think it would be a great project.
Mayor?
Thanks, Shannon.
Yes, Mayor Protem?
Uh, I agree. I I I hear what Ms. Garcia is saying. I I've seen it happen many times, as she has, that it does create a problem. And if we can get this process going, the the sooner that we can get it going, the better. Because Shannon is right, and I've come across a situation when it is a blackout and I know the area, so I know that that I have to stop. But like he said, there's people that do not know the area and they'll just go across and that's when we can create a major accident. So that sounds like a great plan, Sam, if you can continue to work on that.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Damian.
Yes, I had a question. So Sam, would we be able to include it with this year's uh CIP budget or would we have to wait until next year?
So yeah, so typically we have the CIP already pre-programmed. But we we, in anticipation of this meeting, we looked into uh the budget. And uh, we can certainly make it happen uh in this current year. But that would, that would have to be by via staff report and approval uh by the city council. Which um, I I I'm with uh Shannon, 100%. If we can move forward with it uh now, uh, I'd be happy to put together the staff report uh to to get the project going. That'll certainly get uh the systems in place a lot sooner than if we waited to add it to the next year.
Yeah, I agree with, uh, I agree with my fellow uh colleagues. And I think that it's something that if we can put into this year's CIP, let's let's go ahead and uh get the the thing ready and let's get the ball rolling on it. Because we have experienced a lot more power outages this last year than I can remember in the past. Yeah, I I agree with everyone else.
Great, Mr. Mayor? Uh, yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. Uh, no, thank you very much, Sam, for uh providing a solution for for all of us. Um, I certainly agree with the staff report as everyone else. Uh, you know, we have had an acc- uh, an accident in regards to when a light was out. Um, I believe it was on Baldwin Park in Ohio uh sometime last summer. Uh, so this certainly would provide and would have most likely prevented uh such an incident. Because uh I I think it actually caused uh some city damage when they hit, when one of the cars uh was uh hit one of our light poles, if I remember correctly. Um, but yes, thank you very much and thank you, Councilmember Garcia, for uh bringing this to our attention.
Great, so I believe uh, Councilmember Garcia, you have the floor.
Thank you. Well, I I think you got the direction, Sam, so thank you.
I think so, yeah. Thank you, uh, thank you, Council, for the discussion and the direction. And we will go to work, put the staff report uh together and bring it in a future meeting, hopefully um first meeting in March.
Great. All right, is there any other comments from any other council members or city staffs? No? So at this moment, uh, we're not adjourning the meeting, I believe we are, I'm making motion to go into our, go back, recess into closed session, so.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just got a notice from Mark Sue that um, the old one is closed and we have to go into a new one.
Okay.
And that, that new Zoom information was just emailed to everybody and I can text it to anybody uh that needs that also.
Great, okay, so we can all check our emails and then I will see you all there. Wait.
So we gotta, we gotta go into the new one and then come back here afterwards, right?
And then we'll come back and report out.
Correct.
Okay, goodnight.
Thank you.
Trish, I think Trish is talking. Hey, Lulu, you there? Lulu?
So we have quorum. Uh, City Attorney, anything to report out?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council considered several items in closed session. No final action was taken, so there's no reportable action and that concludes my report.
Great, so at this moment, I move to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great, uh, any objections? None? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.